The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I will call the meeting to order, and first on the agenda is soil and water.
Thanks for having me.
Yes.
Yeah, my name's Jake Shannon-CD with the Hubbard SWCD. I'm the water plant coordinator, been one of the facilitators on the Crow Wing River Watershed One Plan. If you'd be able to throw up that slideshow, just go through that with them. And say, just the, yeah, the One Watershed One Plan has gone out to, for the, a formal review that started in right around July 24th, after the last policy committee meeting, and so that got sent out for formal review, so that went to state agencies who were required to review it, along with, it went out for a public review period. And so that's been disseminated through a variety of newspapers, along with email blasts out to a good chunk of like the Lake Association crews, and like the CISA Advisory Committee had a meeting for this, for this, and so they're, they're all been given the links and how to submit feedback, and so it's going for public comment. And this is kind of a required sixty day review to get the, to get the state agencies to get their comments on it. Most of them are just, have been through the process the whole way, through the Technical Advisory Committee. And so they've been a part of the, the planning process, and most of them are just kind of giving a thumbs up and kind of checking a couple of boxes, so it's going, going pretty smooth, but we're hoping to get a good chunk of a public input before the, the public hearing later in October. And so just kind of the background of why I'm here is that the, uh, once, once this plan does get approved, it will be going to each individual board, so SWCD and County Board, to approve it, and so kind of just gonna give here, give you an update, so you're kind of a little bit more comfortable, a little bit more familiar with the plan, once it does arrive. And then it is available on our website if you want to go look at it yourself. It's too big of a document for us to mail, so we just have it hosted on our website. If you go there, that top banner, can click right on that, and it'll bring you to a page, or you can, you can download it yourself, because it's a little bit, it's a large document, so you can't exactly email it around too easily. But I guess, yeah, just a quick introduction into the watershed itself. And so I guess I can do a quick little introduction to what a One Watershed One Plan is for those who might not be aware, when I think of, most of you all have been involved in some regard for it, but essentially it's just a new way of, of watershed-wide planning. Instead of the county water plans, they're kind of moving towards more of these watershed-based implementation funding, and focusing on the watershed level, because it's a lot easier to address, address large-scale concerns and large-scale pollution issues by addressing it across political boundaries. And so using the watershed boundaries have been pretty successful so far, and it's getting easier and easier as more and more groups have been working with them a little bit longer. And then the other, we're talking about the Crow Wing River One Watershed One Plan, so that kind of covers the, about southern, I think like forty-eight percent, fifty percent of Hubbard County, so that kind of, in the Hubbard County area, kind of starts out by, uh, by Mantrap, and kind of goes west and, and down to the bottom. There's a little bit of a cutout for Leech Lake River on the east side, the southeast side of the county, but it covers the majority of the southern half, and that includes your Park Rapids, Nevis, majority of Akeley, all fall within, and then a good chunk of the, the majority of the lake area falls within the Crow Wing watershed, so it's pretty, pretty important for the county economically and then ecologically. It's a pretty important watershed for in, in the county, and then for us at the SWCD. And say the, but we're not the only ones a part of it, and say the watershed stretches from just south of Tascas State Park, or Lake Atasca, all the way down to Baxter. So it's quite a large watershed, covers a, a large area, and there's, I think technically seven or eight counties that are, have parts in it, but six have joined on to the planning process, and so you got, you know, us, Becker, Todd, Cass, Crow Wing, and Wadena are all joined on. And so it's a pretty good crew, and say compared to our other watersheds, this one's very large. Our other watersheds, I think the biggest one we have is four partners, where now we have six, so it's quite a, quite a large watershed, and it's very diverse, with the big, two big lake areas, a large kind of wetland complex in Drumlins in the Wadena area, along with some very, uh, very vital and very productive agriculture in a couple of different regions.
Which one didn't sign on?
Uh, yeah, I'd say East Ottertail and Clearwater didn't sign on, just because their percentages were so small, they had such a small amount, that they just, it wasn't really worth their time, like they're, they can still, they're still available to, uh, you know, assist in things, if they have a project, something good happens, but I think both of them had less than three percent of their total county fell within it, so they didn't want to get involved. And say counties are required, if, if ten percent of their county falls within it, they are, like, someone that's required to be, at least have an opinion on it, but when they're smaller like that, they don't really have to, they can just essentially say that they're, that they approve, that they aren't joining the, the process then. But then, yeah, move on to the next slide. And so we have the watershed, and say the, kind of the big thing to note with this slide is just that the watershed itself isn't like some of the ones that they have in the south part of the state, where it's a lot more rehabilitation. A lot of this area is pretty natural, and it's a lot, a lot of this focuses on protecting high-quality areas than it is about restoring. There is some issues in there, there's a handful of impaired water bodies, there's a handful of groundwater issues, there's known issues, but comparatively to other watersheds, this one's more of a protection-based with some focus areas of restoration, with a big one being, uh, being groundwater protection. We can move on to the next one. Then, kind of one thing with such a big watershed and such a large amount of partners, the, kind of the way that the group decided to work on it was on a planning region, so they kind of broke it up into four regions, kind of geographically, and to kind of focus on the, kind of the, the style of work you're looking to be doing. And so Hubbard County has, falls into two of the work areas, so that's the northwest tributaries, and then the headwaters. And so that's kind of the, the blue and the red on that map there, and so we're primarily gonna be partnering with, when looking at actually implementing and reaching goals in these planning regions, is gonna be focused, uh, working with Wadena and Becker County. And say I think Cass overlaps just a little bit, but the mo- majority of our area, it will be with, our work will be with Wadena and Becker Counties, because their planning regions overlap with us quite a bit. Can move on to the next one. And here's just a wheel showing all the partners, and so compared to some of our other groups, this is a quite a large one, so it's been, especially in the planning process, it's very good that these, a lot of these folks have already been through two, three, some even upwards of six plans already. So this is, isn't anything new, so it's been going pretty smooth. Move on to the next one. This just kind of highlights some of the, uh, the key resources in the watershed, and this is really what's the, uh, kind of what I like to highlight for Hubbard County, and say, you got the wild rice lakes, and say we've got, uh, I think about a little over a dozen wild, classified wild rice lakes in this part of the county, and so we've got about a, a third of the, a third of the existing, or the, the known, the classified lakes for wild rice. When it comes to Cisco Refuge, I think we've got six of the eight that are in the entire watershed. When it comes to priority shallow lakes, I think when I counted, we had about twenty-four of them. When that includes some of your lakes like Fourth Crow Wing, Heinz Lake, First Crow Wing, Moran, Upper Twin, are some of your, uh, priority shallow lakes. And then we've got like a Trout Lake, which is Blue Lake, and so we've got, you're looking at kind of these big key resources that are looking to protect in this plan. Hubbard County, in most categories, has a, a third upwards of sixty, seventy percent of them, so we've got some of the very high priority resources to protect. And so this is a pretty, we're a pretty important area in the plan, and along with it's a pretty important plan for us at the SWCD, just because a lot of the focus resources fall within that. And then like the, uh, the lakes of phosphorus sensitivity, I think we have another twenty-some of those that fall within the county, like notable ones is like Long Lake is one of the, the highest priority ones in the entire watershed for the phosphorus sensitivity, but you have other lakes like Heinz Lake, I think Blue Lake, and some of those other deep cold water lakes that really respond rapidly to increased phosphorus are in there, but I think we got another about twenty-four of those.
So Jake, what, what, what's the main cause of the phosphorus, and just runoff, or is it septic?
Uh, it's say, it's, uh, phosphorus sensitivity doesn't really necessarily mean that they're actually getting, that they are polluted, it's just that they're, that they're really gonna be sensitive, that they'll react to it well, and so that typically means that they currently have extremely low phosphorus levels, and they're more, uh, in the low algae, so that means when that, you know, when you get a notable amount of phosphorus coming in there, you'll see a very visual change. Even though the lake, compared to other lakes, might still be pretty healthy numbers-wise, but you'll just see a very visible change quite easily.
And it can be runoff or failing drain fields that could cause?
Yeah, and so they, a lot of these areas, uh, they're, I mean, half, like Long Lake does have some, some watershed disturbance, but a lot of it is that, is nearshore development, groundwater leaching, and then overland runoff. And then there is some, couple areas where there is septic concerns, but... And then when you got the lakes of biological significance, we have another, about thirty percent of the ones in the watershed fall within Hubbard County. And so this, this slide just kind of overviews how the important water bodies and important resources within the watershed as a whole, and that were pretty, pretty prevalent, about a third, a third or more of pretty much every category. Can go to the next one. And then this, uh, this plan, it's, you know, it's watershed plans, ma- mainly SWCDs and counties are gonna be working with it and implementing it, but it's not an SWCD plan, it's not a county plan. It is a watershed plan, so there's been a variety of different events to get public feedback, like even before the planning officially started, we put out a survey, that thing had like a hundred and seventy responses, which was pretty good for something like this, because a lot of this stuff just kind of is off the wayside for most folks. We did two public kick-off events, and then, uh, along with three CISA Advisory Committee meetings, and so those were a handful of citizens. I think about fourteen to fifteen on average for each meeting. I think we had one kind of smaller meeting in the middle of the winter, when people weren't quite around the area. But the CISA Advisory Committee meeting was made up of business owners, residents, lakeshore residents, agricultural producers, and then other stakeholder interests of, of that style with, within the watershed. It made up a pretty good, pretty good group, pretty, uh, pretty well diverse group, so it wasn't just, uh, over, overloaded by one side or the other, so it was a pretty good conversation, and they kind of did a lot of the, a lot of the pre, uh, pre-work, planning work, not quite as much the technical, just kind of, a lot more of their stuff was advisory, and saying, hey, these are the concerns as citizens that we're aware of, that we hear, and whatnot, and that kind of shaped how the Technical Advisory Committee was looking at stuff, so kind of what to focus on, what areas to focus on, what people are concerned about, and how to address them, so it was a very good process to have, and they just had their last meeting uh, last week, last Monday, I believe was their last meeting on that, and so now they're currently, uh, hopefully getting ready to put, submit public comment, and then prepare for the, uh, if they have anything, if they have any additional comments on the plan for our October seventeenth meeting. Move on to priority issues, and this just, uh, and so there was four major categories that we set up, was just that, the, that soil, groundwater, surface water, and then the habitat one, the forest and habitat one, the, uh, the, then, the major categories on the right side, you see that table there, those are kind of the ten big resource categories that we're focusing on, and then how each of the priority issues falls within there. And so these are kind of the major, uh, things you'll see with, if you go look at the plan, and these are kind of the major things we're addressing, trying to put in numbers to, and where they look at, uh, look at working on, so this is kind of more of the, not quite the narrative, not quite the, uh, the numbers, but more of the, uh, the concerns and the goals that are looking to be addressed. Go on to the next slide. And then, since this is a One Watershed One Plan, is a large area, and there is some funding attached to it, a real big focus is on prioritizing the funds, and prioritizing efforts to do the most, most good with as little amount of effort or funds as possible. So if you look at the, kind of the map on the left side, that'll be your groundwater map, and so that's a kind of a combination of groundwater vulnerability and existing data of what areas have elevated like nitrate levels, or chemical levels, or pollutant levels in the groundwater, and along with the vulnerability. Especially up here with our very sandy soils, that's, we can see a lot of, uh, the Park Rapids and Hubbard County and Becker area, especially on that Straight River, is very, is very, uh, highly rated, just because of our soils. Everything leaches into the groundwater pretty quick, and the aquifers aren't super far down. And then, uh, so you can see that's kind of our, our groundwater area, and the focus resource, kind of in the middle, is kind of the surface water, and so those are some of the larger streams and more priority lakes, and you kind of see the, uh, got that swath across the Crow Wing chain and the Straight River, kind of cutting through the, the middle part of the, or the southern part of the watershed for us. Includes, you know, your Beltanes and whatnot in there, and along with that large gull area, and then kind of a big river reach kind of in the Todd County area, where there's a lot, a lot of bacteria concerned in some surface waters, because it's very, very cattle-heavy down there. And then the forest resource ones are the, kind of that map on the right with the green, so these are just areas where protecting these areas is a really good job at protecting the water in general flowing away, and it's much cheaper to protect the forest than it is to clean the water when it gets down to the cities for the drinking water, so keeping these forests up here clean is pretty good. Go to the next one. And then they essentially just overlaid these maps and ranked them based on the, uh, how much of each, uh, category they had, and how, uh, and then ranked them on a kind of a tier system, and so the, you can see the dark green is the highest tier for the most focus, and so you can see a good chunk of Hubbard County falls within that area. They also put that focus along the entire Crow Wing River, and they put a buffer, I forget exactly the width of that, but any, any projects with that fall within that to help protect the, the direct, uh, Crow Wing River also got bumped up, and then you have that large swath over by that gull, that gull chain there. Can move on to the next one. And since this is, i- isn't just a plan where we're prioritizing and, uh, and saying what we wish we could do, where we have set goals, since this is funding through the clean water, uh, clean water funds, there is goals set, and so here are just some of the, the goals, and these are goals that we're expecting to be able to achieve. They're not, and they're not end points, it's not, once we hit, hit a goal that we're just gonna stop. These are goals we expect we can achieve with the funds, and we're hopefully, by leveraging other funds and additional capacity, and additional just, uh, landowner interest, we can go above and beyond with the existing funds, or bringing in federal funds, or leveraging other sources, but these are goals, we think we can hit with the funding that's gonna be, uh, a part of this plan. But it's not, I guess, not an end goal, it's not the, gonna be, you know, hit this number and save everything, and stop any degradation, this is just a goal, we think we hit the plan, they'll have a notable benefit. And then this just kind of goes over the benefits, and so if you want to look at that more, you can take a look at that, but just goes over some of the, some of the benefits that the, the goals will result in. Move on, and so essentially for the implementation, there's kind of three major things, there's kind of like the protection aspect, which is kind of the most cost-effective. It's a lot easier to protect something from being damaged than it is to fix it. There's kind of the, uh, the manage it, and so that's more of the, your agricultural lands that, uh, they're, they're developed, and they're gonna be that way, but there's ways to manage them to be, uh, uh, more beneficial to the landscape or to the groundwater. And then there's your fix it, that's your full-blown restoration, where there's major issues in an area, major groundwater issues, major surface water issues, and then you're looking to fix it. So this plan's gonna mainly, primarily be your, uh, your landscape stuff, and then your manage it with a little, with, with a little fix it here and there on some of the im- uh, impairments, but there won't be a whole lot of that compared to other, other watersheds, especially in the south, where there, have a lot more degradation. Go down one more. And so here's just kind of some of the, uh, in the beginning of the planning process, they went around all the counties and SWCDs, and so this includes funds that are, are part of like the NRCS budget that goes towards this stuff, and it actually includes regulatory, so some of the county funds that go to regulation, some of the state funds that go to regulation. This kind of gives a breakdown of what's actually being spent in this area, and, uh, in this watershed towards some sort of conservation, so it covers a wide swath, and the numbers look pretty big, but it covers quite a few agencies and quite a few programs, so this even includes aquatic basin species and stuff like that, so it covers a, a wide swath. But the, uh, there should be an estimated about a hu- eight hundred and forty-six thousand a year going for the implementation of this plan of additional funding, that'll get stacked on top of this, the funding that's believed to already be here. Go to the next one, and so yeah, so some, some of the big, uh, overall plan highlights is that the prioritize target measurement, uh, PTM app, I'm not sure if how familiar they are with that, but that's just a, uh, a state program that they have developed, kind of a toolbox to help really focus and prioritize and model projects and where they should fall, uh, within a watershed, and so that was done in, uh, this watershed, and with the, the best data we've ever had, so we got really good data, so it should help us prioritize and find those projects, and get a lot of good projects for, uh, good bang-for-your-buck projects. And so that, uh, we got a handful of different landscape-based prioritization models done, like rack scoring, and so that's just repair and adjacency and quality, and so that's a good way that they do forest stewardship and landscape-based stewardship stuff by focusing on those parcels that one, have, are next to a water body that'll have a good impact, and they're adjacent to existing public land, because it has been found that there's benefit if it's next to county forest land, next to a state park, and there's additional benefits when these areas are protected. And then quality, and that's just a high-quality parcel. And then there's some clim- climate resilience and environmental justice stuff in there. The big one for climate resilience is just with the, with the storm, if you've been getting, or being a little bit, a little bit more rapid, and a little bit, uh, a little bit more water and a little bit less time, so they're just designing stuff to be a little more resilient, uh, high, uh, high flow. And then just the vision statements, this was came up by a mix of the, the policy committee and, uh, CISA Advisory Committee, and just kind of the, goes over kind of the goal, and so this is classed right in the, right in the beginning of the plan. Go to the next one. And so yeah, this is that, that sixty-day review, July twenty-sixth to September twenty-fourth, and it's a public comment period, we'll go to that, and then the comments from the state agencies come through there, and then they have to fit, essentially, once this is done, we have to review all the comments, and then have a, have an official, uh, response to it before we can kind of submit this to Bowser, so just because it's commented in here doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be a modification in the plan, just that we have taken it into consideration. And then kind of lastly, kind of, most importantly is that timeline, and so you can see that, uh, we're in a pretty quick timeline. We're ahead of schedule, what we're required to be for the plan, but we'd like to get it going and get it implemented and get it moving. But the, uh, and so that's kind of important, so when, when the, after that October seventeenth meeting, it'll be kind of a short, about a month window, where groups be coming back to the county boards and the SWCD boards looking for approval of, uh, essentially, not not approval of the plan, but approval to send it to Bowser for their review, and so we, we kind of urge folks that, uh, if they, uh, did take a look at the plan beforehand, get their comments in for that kind of, for the October seventeenth meeting, so that when we, uh, get to the part where we're looking to approve it, that there's not as much confusion or concern with the plan or the planned content, so we're just kind of urging folks to look at it now until, before we get there, or else, and say, because with, kind of how the, the meetings with Bowser aren't, aren't every month, so if we miss, if we get delayed a month, it actually ends up at the back end delaying us about three months. Because of how their, their timelines work with, uh, the holidays, and some of their meetings over the winter are less frequent.
Jake, are you guaranteed funding for ten years?
Uh, it's a, uh, it's allocated as long as it keeps getting re-upped by the legislature, so that, so it's like a, it's a guaranteed number as long as the funds exist. So if that pool keeps getting re-upped and reallocated, then that, that funding will be guaranteed. At that, at that amount, essentially.
To those of you that are on the One Watershed One Plan, do you guys have comments?
Um, I was, one of the questions I had, Jake, was, um, I was with the Mississippi Headwaters One Watershed One Plan, and we had some implementing, uh, or some planning dollars left over, we were able to roll over into implementation. Uh, have you guys have any dollars left over to get started when, if this gets approved?
Yeah, currently we're, so, we're notably under budget, and say, I didn't bring that, we're, we're doing pretty well in the budget for the planning, and a good chunk of that's gonna be going into some of the, uh, some of the contracts we had with, uh, the plan writer, they're coming in on a budget, since they've done enough of them, they can do them pretty quick. We're gonna be spending some of that funds on those contracts, on giving additional resources, so one of them's like a tracking sheet, so that, since it's a six, six, uh, uh, county, so twelve entity docu- or a plan that they can really track and, and the measurables, and so that'll keep costs down on the back end of reporting and whatnot. But when it comes to rolling it over into implementation, it hasn't been that discussion yet, I expect we'll have some funds left over, 'cause looking at what we have and what we need to get done, I don't expect we'll expend all of it. And so there's a good chance we'll do something like that if it's available.
I know, I think you have to get okay from Bowser to, to do that, but, uh, it usually goes pretty slick.
Yeah, unsafe, yeah, with, with Bowser, anytime they can spend it on putting it in the ground versus paying a plan writer or anything else, they're always pretty happy on that, so they're typically pretty amenable to anything that gets more stuff done instead of, uh, staff time, or, or paying a contractor, say, so I wouldn't be too surprised. We expect them to do it if, if it's, if it's there.
You know, November, when the individual boards meet to approve the plan, is that also when the memorandum of agreement is, is done, or is that later?
Yep, and so we're expecting to have one of those to bring for that October meeting, just so people can have it a little bit early.
Okay.
And so people can have that memorandum of agreement. It's gonna be pretty boilerplate, similar to all the other ones that we've done with just names and stuff, it's gonna be fairly boilerplate, so it shouldn't be anything too crazy. I just think the, uh, the biggest, uh, conversation right now is, uh, what, because some of the bylaws, and so like the, there's not really a set rule on, for, uh, with these plannings, uh, planning phases, a lot, a lot of times your first, uh, first budget we put together is a little bit of a, a guess, since it's all voluntary programs, and that we can't, we're not making anyone do anything, they'll, they have to voluntarily sign up for these programs, that you never really know where projects are gonna take off, so a lot of times you can expect you're gonna have a, you know, a dozen of these projects over the first two years, but then another project style really takes off, so the, the real conversation right now is making sure the, the, the funding's flexible, to be able to move it between, uh, projects that people actually are willing to do, because since it is all voluntary, really dependent on, on the will of the public, and the will of the landowners, and what they're doing, so we've had issues in some watersheds where it's all very, it's all very done geographically, all very scientifically, mathematically, without taking into consideration what people are just willing to do at the time. And so it can make it a little bit difficult to actually get good projects on the ground. And so that'd be one of the things, and how much is allowed, how much leeway that the policy committee is going to give the, uh, the fiscal agent overseeing the, uh, the, the One Watershed One Plan, uh, to move funds to match the project demands.
And Jake, I got in on the tail end of the Leech Lake one, and then, like I say, the Mississippi Headwaters one. Um, I noticed that, and this, the Crow Wing one's plan is very similar, uh, as you stated earlier, in our part of the state where it's more about protecting instead of restoration. And, uh, I know that I can't get down to the details about this thing needs to be fixed and that kind of a thing, we're at this point. But, uh, no, I, I think it looks good. I'm encouraged to see what's, what's gonna be prioritized, and get started on.
One of the things I like about it, too, is it's gonna take some of those bigger watershed projects and kind of take it off our local people's plates, so that they can dive into other things that we may not have had time to deal with.
Yeah, one of the good things about these plans, there's a lot of projects, especially in the past, before the One Watershed One Plans, where you find a good project, and then you're spending a lot of time trying to find funding for it with, beforehand, where all the, where all the grants were competitive, because the nice thing about this is that the, you know, it's allocated to the group, and it's non-competitive, you just have to put it, it has to match what you're putting into your plan. So if you're prioritizing these areas, you have to have, I think they typically shoot for about seventy to eighty percent within your prioritized areas, and thirty percent can be implemented outside if it's a good project, and so that's where it's been really nice, and so it lets things go a lot quicker, where instead of hearing about a project, and then you have to find funding, you can hear about a project, and then you have the funding, and you start working on it, so you can be a little bit more, a little more efficient, where some, you know, some plant, products would take a year or two from hearing about it, we're now, with One Watershed One Plan funds, we can turn it around in about four months, if we can.
Nice when we do our local water plan, which I think we need to keep doing, because, uh, they're definitely... It's nice when we do our local water plan, which I think we need to keep doing, because, uh, they're definitely our local issues. The one that identified in the plan with Beltane and other local issues that you still identify the things that the one watershed, one plan is working on your local plan, but you don't have to expend your own resources or your own time necessarily on that. We can have other things in our local plan that we can get done.
Yeah, but when the one watershed, one plan isn't the end-all, be-all, it's not the only funds that are available. And so, you know, when it comes to these projects that might not match, there'll be a good part of the priority locally, but not, might not have made it to the priority on the one watershed, one plan, we still have additional funds, we can work on some of those. And so that'll be nice to have these to kind of cover the, uh, you know, a good chunk of the projects, and we'll free up more of those funds for some of those other projects outside that are good projects just outside of these priorities. So free up funds for a lot of projects that, that are harder to, harder to fund, because they don't rank quite as high internally, so.
Anything else for Jake?
Are the number of acres that are enforced in this watershed, or is it, uh, pretty well equal to what the goals would be, or do you gotta, do you think we need to add more?
I'd say, I mean, most of it's protection-based, because that kind of the goal in a lot of these, especially the upper watersheds, is to have about seventy-five percent of it in a beneficial land use, and so that mean, that could just be prairie or forest or, uh, light development or whatnot. And most of them have the ability to get up to that seventy-five percent, not a whole lot of them are impossible to get there without converting anything that's developed back into it. And so for the most part, it's kind of just about, uh, uh, keeping the healthy areas healthy. There's a good chunk of state land and a good chunk of county land in here that really helped push those needles, and so it's just hitting some of those, those large private landowners who may just have it for deer hunting or logging. And, uh, because, you know, with, even with, in this framework, logging is plenty allowed. It's not like that's something that they're telling you to shut that down. That's encouraged, because a lot of these areas, a healthy forest is a forest that's getting managed, so.
There's a lot of agriculture in this watershed.
Yeah, but big focus on that one currently is that groundwater aspect. Uh, the groundwater nitrate levels and whatnot's a big, a big push, and we did, or outreach to municipalities, like cities across the watershed. And the ones that commented for the cities, that was their, that was the vast majority of the comment was that groundwater nitrate level, because some of them have been having difficulty with their, uh, city sourcing. I think that's like state wasn't some of the ones down south. So that's been, uh, that groundwater quality has been a, a big focus, especially for the municipalities.
I've noticed, uh, this one came up and the Mississippi one watershed plan was, um, with some of the cities in, in that watershed district, uh, they're able to use street sweeping as a, uh, a, 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 a co- available cost or whatever. Because it, the, the argument there, of course, is that, uh, instead of it going into the sewer system uh, in those cities and then eventually making its way to hopefully a retention pond and then into a, into the Mississippi River, uh, they take it off the street to begin with. And I don't know, in this watershed, of course, it'd be Park Rapids would probably be one of the bigger cities in Nissaw. I'm sure they do some sweets, street sweeping and it might be an option.
That one in other watersheds, that, and then along with, uh, brining equipment have been available, just, uh, and say, anything you can do to reduce the amount of pollutants that are even in the old runoff ahead of time is good. So like brining equipment just reduces the amount of salt required to salt the road or salt the city or a sidewalk or whatnot. So that's been allowed in other ones, and some of, some of those ones that can essentially it's, you, you, you buy it once, and then, you know, you, you help o- offset the cost of like the municipality to install it, and then it works for them and kind of has a, a, a long-term benefit for kind of a one-time purchase, at least on the water, one wash and one plan level. The municipality still need to have someone to be able to run the thing or upkeep it, but a lot of times you can have a, kind of a, a long-term benefit in just keeping the, uh, keeping the runoff cleaner before it becomes runoff.
I can't remember the name of the person, but have, has soil and water been approached by, uh, Shar and I saw it at an AMC conference once. It's a mechanical device they're putting in ponds and and rivers and small lakes, that as long as there's water flow through it, it cleans up a lot of contaminants.
Oh, I guess I'm not sure what that is. I know a lot of like the stormwater drains are using like storm scepters, which are pretty good at separating stuff out, I guess I'm not sure what that is. I mean, I know like some have done certain things like alum treatments, where they can essentially put this aluminum kind of compound into it and it, and phosphorus and chem- uh, pollutants stick to it, and then they can clean that out. Because I'm not sure of a kind of mechanical device.
This one adds nothing, it just changes the, uh, uh, the charge of the, of the, uh, the, the words of the atoms or whatever flowing through, and it changes the charge of it, they're like, it'll clean up algae in a like a retention pond on a farm. And as long as you have water flow through it, it will stay that way. If you shut it off, it, depending how long it's been running, how long it cleans up, it might take a year or two, but it'll revert back. Because whatever's causing it will, will come back.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess I'm not sure a hundred percent.
It was quite promising. I know they're, they're testing it down around the Twin Cities and stuff, and I, I was approached by one of the guys that's working with it to see if we'd be interested at all at some point in time.
I have that being, I guess, yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure of, of that, but I've heard of things where they, they can like, uh, accelerate settling into some of these areas, because they're, you know, that we're retrofitting stormwater ponds from thirty years ago to accelerate settling, so they can have the more stuff overtopping without losing a lot more of the stuff, because, you know, when it's just all gravity settling, it could take a good while. So now they're putting in stuff to try to accelerate settling of, you know, sediments and whatnot. Uh, there might be something similar to that.
If you're interested, um, in looking into that, Eric Bytonorth would be able to tell you about it.
Okay, yeah, I can.
Because I've talked to him about that.
Reach out to him and see what that would be, because yeah, there'd be, I'm sure with, with some of these cities and along, a good chunk of these lakes, I think, yeah, a good chunk of these cities are on a wa- on directly on a
Yeah.
lake or on a river, so it might be.
You'd have to almost identify something that you feel is impaired that you would want to try it on. But if interested, shoot, shoot me an email, I'll get you the guy's name.
Reach out and find that, that'd be, that'd be cool to see, because, yeah, a lot of the times that these plans end up where they'll take, especially when there's a lot of urban areas, they'll develop a little, uh, that PTM app works, it develops priority areas for agricultural pro- practices, but there is another model, you can have people, I think it's called the, oh gosh, hot tub or bathtub or something along that, where you can identify that within urban developed areas, where you kind of your biggest bang for the buck, if you were to put in some sort of stormwater retention basin or some sort of project like that, it can calculate your benefits. And so a lot of the times, because there, there's a good chunk of cities like Nissaw, Park Rapids, Nevis, all groundwater bodies, that that, I wouldn't be surprised if during the planning or during the implementation process, they'll put something like that together. I guess here if there's nothing else, kind of the one thing to reiterate, if you have any questions, I'd, I'd be happy to answer them sooner than later, so if you have anything popping up, kind of feel free to reach out to us, or my email and whatnot. Uh, it can be found on our website, so if you have any questions or concerns about the plan, it's easier to address them now than it will be to address them later in the process, so.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Okay, Andrea and Christina for Highway.
Ryan.
Yeah.
So not sure why, but we can download this document, but we cannot save it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's telling us that there's, um, network problems. And so then I, I tried to save the presentation just done, and that saved just fine, so.
Interesting.
I'm not sure. I know nothing about computers.
Well, and if you guys want a physical copy too, we can keep doing that with both the annual report or the budget. I just wasn't sure where you guys were with that.
Well, this is nice, but I would like to be able to save it to my desktop.
And pop it into SharePoint, so you'll be able to access it from your desktop.
Okay.
So I have Christina with, um, she takes what we discussed for the budget for twenty twenty-five, and then she puts it into the, the spreadsheets that her and her predecessor created that have been used. So I asked that she come, and I also asked if she would, uh, kind of lead talking about it, just because this is a very different format than what I'm used to budgeting. Um, and she knows exactly where everything is located in her spreadsheet. Um, but we, you know, and I can touch definitely on why we chose the specific monies and the specific dollars and the projects. Um, anything that's a change from previous years, uh, that we saw in the last four months since I've been here, any needed changes in the budget. And then also with the construction projects for next year, and why. Why that's a big number, because there's a lot of work next year coming too, so. Um, yeah, with that, if you'd like to take and start.
So what we've been working on the last couple of months is going through so far twenty twenty-four receipts and disbursements and putting an estimate of where we'll end this year, because that kind of has to be our starting point of what we can afford to do next year. So on the left-hand side is that twenty twenty-four, uh, estimated ending balances. We haven't been spending any sales tax option projects, because we do have something big budgeted next in twenty twenty-five. Um, so we are gonna end twenty twenty-four with three point three million in there.
And we do have that county road eighty, I'm sorry, eighty-six, is that the project over by Cass County that Cass is leading?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three. Um, we're gonna use the sales tax on that project, um, just because it was a combined and it's a county road, so we'll be using those funds on county roads. So there will be a withdrawal, and, and that estimate was about
Eight hundred.
It's, it's about five hundred thousand is what the, the bid came in at, so it's a lot less than what we planned. But it's a very needed project, and it's a big project. So there will be that withdrawal this year out of that money, but it's um, less than we planned for it.
And this would include that from our construction pages. Um, yeah, so then the highlights that we just wanted to touch on, um, we're not asking for an increase in our tax apportionment from last year. Um, we can leave that at three point five million. Transit tax revenues are up, and that does include interest, which has been great with, uh, the newly, new way we're investing it. Four percent, I think it is, with the special money market that they switched it all to. That's really been nice. Um, and then twenty twenty-five, we would be using a good chunk from transit sales tax fund. And building fund, we have a couple things planned at the North Shop. Um, security camera system and an air conditioning unit in their office area. For a total of twenty thousand two hundred, that's what we're estimating. And then we do have a retirement plan for the beginning of the year, and that severance pay would come out of a committed fund. So I just wanted to note that. And then our miscellaneous and accounts receivable receipts are way up. And I just wanted to note that that was due to three point five million coming from townships and cities for that. Um, and then our payroll is, even, even though it does include a three percent cost of living adjustment and the step increases, it's, I, what, two thousand, within two thousand of last, this year, so just with
A lot of staff turnover.
Yeah, a lot of staff changes and people coming in and out lower steps. Um, it's basically left that line item alone. And then for capital outlay, we would like to get, um, in the plans, a tractor with a broom attachment. Right now we have one, and it's pretty old, um, so it's due. And then our trailer for hauling larger equipment is rusting out on us, so. Um, we've heard that they're like a twenty-six week order.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing how, you know, kind of like last night, talking about the turnaround on construction, but equipments, like, you know, since COVID, it, it's still at six months, eight months, twelve months to turn around and get a truck ordered, or you know, to get a, a trailer even, which you'd think that they just have those mass-produced and wait, ready to go, but no, it's, you know, two months is, three months is what they're telling us, and, um, so a lot of these things, you know, um, I guess I can keep going on that one.
Yeah.
A lot of these equipments are ones that, and I'm sure you're aware, that if we order the year before we lock in on state bid prices with, for this year, before they renegotiate them with, with all their contractors, and then we've been seeing like a seven to twelve percent increase every year when they renegotiate these state bid prices. So it's, it's very beneficial for the county, you know, if, if this, if this preliminary budget, if you're okay with that equipment line item, and to give me the go-ahead to place an order on these equipment, it's, um, very beneficial to get them in this year versus waiting the seven percent increase for next year, and then you don't know what it's going to cost, you know, it's kind of a unknown at that point of what that money is.
As, as far as a tractor with a broom, um, is there another purpose that you're going to plan on using that tractor for mowing?
It tows a, um, the packers, it
Okay.
uses the packers, and then it can also, we're looking at getting another mower attachment for it. And with that tractor, we're actually looking at getting rid of two other tractors that we own currently, that one just doesn't work for what we need at the purposes anymore, and the other one is old.
The broom that we have is only a broom.
Mm-hmm.
This would be a tractor with a broom attachment for, so yeah, just for that purpose exactly, the snow blower.
Yeah, but we, we purchased a snow blower from the city, um, from their airport, so they would also just, all these attachments that can fit on a tractor would be used with that tractor.
Because I know there's some pretty good rates on rentals of power brooms, street, you know, s- not a street sweeper, but a power broom that you typically see in, and you can lease to own, you can rent to own, there's, there's all kinds of options, and sometimes they come up fairly reasonable. But if there's other purposes for it,
Yep, they're definitely.
that'll definitely benefit you, then I can, I can see that.
And our broom currently that we have, the, the bristles are so worn that it doesn't, it doesn't pick up and it doesn't push the material anymore. And it's, the way it's built, there's a metal arm on the edge of it where we can't sweep gutters with it, because that metal arm hits the gutter, and then we can't get close enough, so then we're hiring anyways, we're paying anyways to hire something and to come in and, um, you know, hearing that sweet, street sweeping might be a potential watershed money plan, it might be worth it to look into if there is something that can benefit with us owning, because we do have quite a few miles. And even our bridge decks, it'd be nice to go and pick up that material versus brushing it off, so I might talk to them, chat with them and see if that's a potential.
And if not purchasing, is leaves maybe paying for the?
Yeah, maybe using some funds, because we do pay, um, and we street, uh, street, we sweep off the streets um, in the spring with all the sand salt, we ha- we pay someone to come in and pick up some of that sand material, and that's good to know that, I made note of that, to talk to them about it. Yeah, because we pay the cer- cities currently, they come in and they sweep, sweep fifteen, and then they sweep six, just because we don't have the machine to get into that gutter pan and pick up that material. Um, also in there, uh, this mini excavator that we've been, uh, looking at, I actually noticed a, a very needed use for it, uh, we were out on some box culverts. Um, and currently our excavator is, is large and it, it can't sit on the shoulders with how steep they are. And I was out there and, you know, looking at these, these culverts, and in the end of them, there's, there's cattails growing in the aprons of the pipe, just because they, we haven't been able to reach and scoop out and, and move that material away. Um, so that is the main purpose of this mini axe, but also that they, um, can use attachments in terms of like a a brush mower, where you can use your arm of your, your mini axe, and you can go up and you can vertically mow, brush away from the roads, you know, that we, we overhangs, and you got to get that clear zone. And a grapple arm for grabbing debris out of bridges, you know, with, uh, beavers and sticks and stuff. So there's again, multiple uses for it. Um, it's just something that we don't currently have, but could be very beneficial. And then we also, the lease payments, we lease, um, a few vehicles, uh, pickup trucks. And then for engineering, uh, an updated total station, I think ours, you said, is about twenty years old, and it's pretty much irrelevant right now, is with the way GPSs have changed and upgraded to the new digital tremble system, and they're very expensive, but we're looking at purchasing, um, a, a year-old model, a new, a new total station is about forty thousand dollars, and then they said the new year-old model is about twenty thousand, and I said, for the amount that we use it, that'd be acceptable to do the year-old model. Um, but when you're in, uh, I guess the point of a total station is when you're in an area that has, uh, that you're densely covered by trees, or that you don't have good cell service, you use these total stations, and that allows you to do your, your surveying work. Which here, there's a lot of densely covered tree areas, and especially up north, there is no cell service, so we do definitely use the total station.
So I was going to ask you what a total station is.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't know the technical, I mean, it, it, it's the tripod that sets up and that's your base point, that's what you're using to talk to your GPS system, and you're using it to mark your points, and you know, and you're finding, you're using it as your locate almost, is my understanding of it.
Okay, so it's used in surveying?
Yes, yeah, for surveying purposes. And, and then, you know, our, if our, um, survey Ryan needs to use it too, you know, he could use it if in our If NRM would need to use it, they could use it. And then we just expense it as we do normal equipment. Yeah, I had to survey in a long time ago, so I am, I'm trying to pick my brain out, remembering what we use it for.
And then the eleven by seventeen that we passed out, that's just one of our favorite ways to look at the budget because it shows what revenues are paying for what disbursements. You know, our construction revenues pay for one hundred percent of our construction-related disbursements. You know, same with accounts receivable type projects that we're gonna be billing the townships and cities. That's an in and an out as far as the budget summary page. So yes, this year, it, it looks very large, um, as revenues and expenditures, but there is a lot of accounts receivable, you know, almost five million in there, just in, in and out accounts receivable. But then also in our own construction efforts.
I think, um, with the construction, I, our biggest project next year will be county road one in town here by holiday and then through city limits. Um, I think Apex Engineering is estimating six million dollars for that project and our share was about four million. So very lar-, I mean, we only get three point one million of our state aid dollars, so we're gonna have to make up some funding there along with the other projects we have planned. So it's a very large project. It's very needed for the city to update the road to that standard, but it's, um, the estimate is, is quite large for that one, so it's.
What kind of flexibility do we have in the, in the local option sales tax spending, the dispersing?
So my understanding with that, and I'd have to really delve into, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, so this is my understanding of how I interpret this, the statutes, is that it has to be used for roads. And every year you do a five-year plan, you kind of designate where those funds would be used. And then once you, um, approve that plan, then that's kind of where that money should be going. And there, granted, there is, you can move it around, but you have to show a need for it, which is what we show on our five-year plan, is that there is a need for it. Um, that's, that sheet I had last night at the five-year plan meeting had a column in there with the, the sales and that's where I kind of distributed where I thought we were kind of missing some funding on some roads or where we needed like next year, that four million dollar job that we don't have enough state aid dollars even to cover that. Um, a good source to use that. Um, I looked at it, when I placed some money, I looked at it at, our county roads are a high priority just because they, it's tax dollars, it's, it should go back to those roads. And also roads that have a very high ADT that are very expensive projects, like the number one. That, uh, a lot of vehicles travel on that road, a lot of county individuals benefited from it. And the people who come here and visit, they benefit from that road too. So that's another reason why I use that sales tax on that specific road. Kind of giving, giving them their money back almost in a sense is what it, what I was just kind of showing them. But that's my understanding with the sales tax, you just have to show that need. Um, some people, some districts had like a twenty-page list when they, and then once you get to the end of that list, then it's like, oh crap, you know, what do we do now? But I like the way Hubbard has been doing it, where they're showing that need every two years, um, and they're just keeping it going down the road. It's, it's a very beneficial, um, thing to have, I, I think, for the road system. Any other questions or? No, it's a lot to look at. There's a lot of numbers and a lot of, um, aspects to this budget. A lot of funding sources, but yeah, if there's questions, just let me know or we can try to answer them as best we can.
What do you, what do you feel, I don't, you probably haven't really been here quite long enough, but, um, vehicle leasing. Do you think it's beneficial in the long term or?
I have, it's funny, because we're, we're looking at it briefly when I was in Kitsin County too, of leasing some equipment even, you know, our motor graders. We ran a lot and I think it's very beneficial on your first round that you do it because you're not, you're not forking over, you know, the fifty thousand dollars of your, your truck. So it's very beneficial in that sense that the first round that you lease vehicles, you're saving, it looks like you're saving a lot of money because you're not outputting that money. But once you kind of continue this cycle of just leasing, then you're, you're never gaining any equity in those vehicles. You're never, you know, when, when we can sell a vehicle for twenty thousand dollars, but then we just trade it in and for them, it's only worth fifteen. You know, we lose that five thousand dollars of equity in that vehicle. So I think for our purposes of highway, like our pickup trucks, I don't see a benefit for us to keep leasing our pickup trucks because we shift them down. When, you know, we, we look at the oldest equipment, we replace that, but then we have a use for that old truck and then we get rid of the bottom ones and we cycle them out that way. For county cars, I think it is a little beneficial there because they're not getting a lot of miles. They're not getting a lot of use on them, they're, um, you know, it's.
Well, they're not specialty either.
Specialty, we, we outfit our pickups a lot, we put the toolboxes, the light systems on them.
Radio.
So then it, we just have to take that all back and we trade them in for lease and, um, I, so I think there's benefit for county cars, but I don't see it for our pickup trucks, which in our budget, we, we're actually gonna plan on buying out the two trucks, two of the trucks that are up this year. We're just gonna buy them out and I think it's eighteen thousand dollars, I think, for two pickups that are four years old. So that's, in my opinion, a good savings. And I keep track of this, I, I, vehicles are fun to me to buy. So it's, I keep track of, you know, where's your sweet spot that you're hitting of where your, your value is decreasing so much, but your miles, you try to hit a.
It just seems like the, like the use of the, uh, highway department is gonna be a lot different than like social services or the nursing pool or something that's gonna be.
Buy, you know, we want.
And you wanna keep them for a long term.
Yeah.
Granted, your, your breaking point for your resale and your, and your upfront cost, you know.
That's kind of what we started to see is, oh, toolbox, headache rack, light bar, radio. We're, we're buying all that and usually it's vehicle-specific.
Yeah.
So we either let it go with, which typically doesn't raise it a lot, it's just that it's on there when you get it. You get what you get, you know, lucky for whoever buys it.
Yeah.
But we're paying someone to install and uninstall a radio every four years.
Versus just keeping it and passing it down the line. And we buy the, the red, cherry red trucks. Um, so it, it's, then they're having to look specifically for that style. We want the three-quarter ton sometimes, we want the crew cab. It's a lot harder for them to get it, I think, enterprise than what we can do with our local dealers and get it.
Yeah.
But again, a different situation for, you know, buying a Dodge Durango or a Ford Explorer. It's a lot easier for the fleet just to cycle those.
The challenge, of course, is, and the trap is, if you just hold on to everything until it depreciates and then you have to buy it all back at one time, that's how this leasing thing works. So as long as they have the budget to maintain it and they're staying on top of it, then it, it makes sense. I've had, I've had these conversations with Jed too, and we, we identified that there was probably an opportunity to reduce our use of leasing as long as they have the budget to maintain the fleet, right? You get in a situation where, when I was back in Monoman, they had fourteen squad cars and they didn't have a single one that had less than a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. Never getting out of that hole without going through a lease program. First year, they got fourteen brand-new squads delivered for the cost of two, right, because of the lease up. And then, you know, by the time you get to the fifth year, yes, the cost is the same as if you were managing your own program. The advantage is, and it might not be the advantage in the highway, that you're always driving something with the most current safety features. You're not driving anything ol- older than four or five years old. And if there's enough reason that we maintain some of the fleet longer than that, but we rotate other things more regularly, that makes sense. It's just, we, we can't get into the trap of backing out of the lease for this group and then cutting the budget so that they don't have the ability to maintain the fleet.
Do we, you know, it kind of la- lost its luster a little bit during COVID, because you couldn't get what you needed anyhow. Is that straightening out some?
Uh, availability is different, um, but I think, I think Andrea mentioned, uh, briefly, you know, if you're looking for a Chevy three-quarter ton, but their best price is on a Dodge, um.
You gotta be willing to change.
Then you gotta be willing to change. And if we're talking about carpool vehicles and we just need a six-passenger van or a six-passenger SUV and we don't care what it is, then we can go with the cheapest and ma- and maintain the lowest cost of leasing there. So we do have more flexibility there. Um, I believe it continues to work for law enforcement. They're, they're planning on being almost a hundred percent leased. Um, I understand why it, why it might not be the route with the highway department. And like I said, as long as we don't fall into the trap of shorting the budget so that we end up with, you know, fifteen vehicles that all have over a hundred and fifty thousand miles on them, we're, we should be all right.
And I'm working on, I know Jeff had sent out a request of a, a long-term capital asset improvement plan of, to show that need of how many, you know, pickups we would need to buy a year. You know, this year, we're looking at a truck and a loader plus two pickups, you know, to show that cost in the future of each year. You know, this might be the equip, equipment costs that we'll be asking for, but to stay on top of keeping your fleet up to date and keeping it, um, you know, useful and relevant to what's going on in today's day and age. You know, our, our motor graders, um, they're so old that they don't have, uh, self-leveling in them, which is a new, in the new motor graders, I think it's the, I forget, it's the MP series or something with John Deere. They have a level that you can set your percent on and it stays consistent and the whole time and it, it just stays. Versus old one, it's a manual set where you gotta, you gotta try to think, you know, I gotta manual set a two percent grade. Well, most people don't know what that looks like or what that means. So it, it's just outdated, you know, where it, it's not relevant to what we need it for anymore, um, because our, our, um, operators are changing too. You know, the old school who learned from the dirt up, you know, of how to build a road, they're, they're not here anymore. It's the new technology era is here where people are used to seeing the, that technology in the machine. They don't know how to, how to operate these machines that don't have that technology. And, and that's, I mean, that's just, uh, surveying is another example. Most people don't know how to use a tripod surveying system anymore. That's what I learned in college, but people are on the, the tremble GPS now. It's, it's irrelevant to learn that old system. Um, so it, I, like Jeff pointed out, we just don't wanna go backwards, you know, with keeping up with the times kind of equipment. But then back to county cars, um, that's kind of what I'm trying to cycle is, is we did, we, we have five, I believe five county cars and then we own one, but they were all purchased at the same time. So like Jeff mentioned, you know, we might be up for trading them all in at one time and I don't wanna do that because then you're gonna see a huge increase in that budget. So I'm in the process of cycling. Do one a year, do two a year and just get into like a six-year cycle of these cars. So you only see a jump just in that one vehicle. You're not gonna see, you know, ten thousand, it might be like three hundred versus your lease payment. So I'm trying to work with that and trying to make a plan there too for those vehicles.
The automatic, I'm just gonna say the automatic cross slope is nice if you, if you don't know the, the technical end of how to build a road. So it, it is handy. It, it comes at a cost, but it is handy.
It is.
Both CAT and John Deere have similar systems and have used a little bit of them in the past.
Yeah.
They are, they are good. Once you learn the system.
Yeah, it is. And even, you know, even our snowplow trucks, they, they, um, have computers in them that tell me how much sand and salt they're pla- placing on the roads. And that's a budget saver, you know, if I can see a guy who's dumping three tons at one intersection, it's like, what is going on? We don't need that. You know, I can pull it back and we can save a little money in revenue and it's, it's all this technology-based. But the manual sand salt dumping does not exist anymore. It's just keeping up with the Joneses, I guess.
And we are seeing with new eyes and we have two vacant positions now, which we're kind of waiting to see, you know, what their preference is on, what their new ideas might be too with needs. You know, like she saw a need for a mini X right away and, oh, yeah. You know, and then just going around and talking, she's been able to find out, we really could use this or we really could use this and.
Yeah, it's, um, I guess everybody has new ideas when they come to a position and, and that's what I'm hoping too is once we get the superintendent on board and then we get a, a new assistant, you know, that they bring these ideas to. We keep just moving forward and being progressive with what we're trying to do. Being proactive, I guess, is the term I like. I do not like being reactive on roads and equipment and, and stuff like that. I like to be on top and be a little proactive.
I think, I think the aspect of employee safety comfort and, uh, their, their time in the seat, basically reducing fatigue and then the, the efficiency of the newer equipment is, is a huge benefit. It, it does come at a cost, no doubt.
It is huge. I had, uh, our, we purchased a, a snowplow and the guys asked for heated seats in there, which you think is a luxury nowadays. But I said, you know, it's no different than me sitting at a desk and getting an ergonomics review on a desk chair. These guys are spending eight to twelve hours sitting in that snowplow truck, you know, let's try to make them as comfortable as they can so that they aren't fatigued, they aren't, their body isn't hurting, that they can do their job to the best of their ability.
Makes a huge difference.
It does, yeah. Or the air shock seats, that's a huge improvement on trucks, you know, it, it grinds on people's spines when they don't have that. And, yeah, so it's, yeah, it's no different. And my desk chair, that's four hundred dollars because it's an ergonomic chair, I guess, you know, I don't know what that means, but, you know, me sitting comfortably. So it's, it's, uh, it's good to keep that in mind, you know, that they, because that's their office, this, this equipment to some of these guys. Yeah, so a little off to ask there, but, um, again, if you have any questions, just let me know and, or Christina, if I'm not available and we can answer anything you guys have.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
There was a couple extra copies.
Oh, okay, I will grab those.
Do you have a superintendent coming up soon?
We have interviews this week. Um, yeah, Thursday and Thursday, we have our interviews set up and very hopeful that we can get someone in there and get that off my plate a little bit and get into a new hand and, yeah.
Were there outside applicants?
We're interviewing seven, I believe.
Okay, good.
I think there were eight, nine applicants and we're interviewing seven of them, so.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I'm very excited. It'll be, it'll be fun to start working with someone new and get some new ideas. Thank you. Anything else, Jeff?
So as I mentioned, we're not gonna review human services budget today. We're just kind of figuring out when to slot that in. But just a kind of reminder of next week's meeting, um, we're gonna have, um, ordinance reviews with Jonathan. I want to do them at a work session, but he's not here this week and I think that they're brief enough that they'll be.
Very little changes.
They'll be understandable when they come out in the agenda. So, um, he'll review those changes. We'll set a date for a public hearing, um, to do that, um, next week. Ellers will be here and will be reviewing the financial management plan as they've been working in the background on for us. Talk about the current county financial position, which is by far and away in good shape. We will be, um, taking on the bonding for the jail project and setting up the bonding for the balance of the GO funds. Their recommendation is, is that we do jail bonding for the ten million that we can do that way because we can use the state's bond rating and get that at a lower interest rate and then the balance of the project when we finally know that number. And, um, that number is within one or two percent of the last number that you saw. I, I had, uh, we'll do that and set a public hearing and issue those in general obligation. So that has to have a public hearing along with it. The jail bonds do not require a public hearing. I went with Paul Michelle, uh, the representative from BKV to the city, um, planning commission meeting last night because the conditional use permit and the variance for that project were up. Uh, both passed easily with very few questions. And, um, I think the last thing is that we have some interest in the letters that I sent relative to acquiring the property to the north and to the west. I've had conversations with owners of both properties, so, um, as that moves along, I'll give you more information. One last item, the, uh, the HRA, the opt-in for the townships and the cities. The next Hubbard County Township Association meeting is in Henrietta on nine sixteen, third Monday of September. So I'm planning on sending those letters out, um, right after Labor Day week so that they have them for a couple of weeks and then I have an opportunity to remind them and ask them to get them on their agendas. I'll be drafting a letter, reminding them of all the ways that this is beneficial. If there's an opportunity, you get to capitalize on it. There is no additional levy at this point in time. If there ever is, you'll have an opportunity to change that option. So I don't, I don't think it's gonna be hard for them to understand, but, um, if you're. Hard for them to understand, but um if you're attending meetings in any of the townships or have contact with any of the supervisors. Beyond the letter that I'm gonna send everybody, it'd be good to update them on that.
Would you uh send us a copy of the letter?
Yes, I will, absolutely, so you have that as a talking point.
And there's a lot of townships that don't come to the.
Yeah, there are, there are, so um maybe I'll even get a list from Theora for the last couple um to make sure. We know who the frequent flyers are, more than half attend the town- the township association, but that leaves another eight to ten that maybe don't, so.
Yeah, and that's why I was kind of looking at my, the nine townships that I have when there's, cause they don't meet every month too, so I. I thought I'd start now and just kind of, even though I don't have anything in the sense to show them, just to kind of let them know.
I'll have that letter drafted before Labor Day and I'll share it with you before it goes out so that township association meetings are usually the second. Monday or Tuesday of the month in the evening.
Townships usually the second.
The second, okay.
Tuesday or Thursday.
Tuesday or Thursday, okay, so if I get it, I'm gonna email it, so if it goes out on the, maybe I should send it the day before Labor Day weekend. Just so that they do have it.
I have a couple of townships that meet the first Thursday.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then I'll definitely send it out by the twenty ninth so that they all have it in hand and you guys will have it before that. I have the resolution ready, I just need to draft the letter and and send it and was considering the timing of it. Hoping that the HCTA would be a a place to reinforce that for the people that attend that. Those were the updates that I had, I will work human services in, um there's a component of the human services fund balance. That is an item we wanna discuss in the financial management plan, so I'm gonna push them into September. Um, probably our first regular meeting, we'll just do it at the end of the regular meeting. Um, and I know that we, we know that their fund balance is not as in good a condition as the other departmental fund balances, but overall the county is, so. We just, we just need to address that, but that were, those were the updates that I had.
All right, is there anything else? All right, motion to adjourn. Okay, Ted moves.
Also.
Steve seconds, all in favor? Close, motion carries.